Okay, let's call this meeting to order. Um, first article on the agenda, or maybe I ought to do a couple of introductions here before we start thinking about it here. We've got Bob Berger, school board member, um, he's our Act 46, I don't know, I guess he's on, he's chair of the Supervisor Union Committee for Act 46, and we've got Tom Gates, also Franklin School Board. What do you, oh, it's been asking, I completely forget being a special town meeting. Would everybody stand, please, and join us in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Another announcement I need to make, if you're an unregistered voter, would you please stand? If you're not a registered voter, the town of Franklin. Every, okay, thank you, sir. You're the only unregistered voter, okay. You may speak at this meeting with the permission of the audience. I'll ask, I'll say, hearing no objections, I'll allow you to ask questions, but I will recognize you only after every registered voter has been recognized first, so you'll be recognized last if you have any questions. Okay? Ready to go? Okay, Article number one, shall the Franklin School District be deemed an existing district for the purpose of Act 46-49, the school district merger law, given the geographic isolation, thereby qualifying for an exemption from the requirements of Act 46-49 and the statewide plan? Would somebody like to put that on the floor? Jay?
Moderator, Jay, no. My pleasure to make that motion.
Okay, the motion's been made, do I hear it seconded? Jay, seconded? I saw your hand, Jay. The articles, uh, the motion on the floor, shall the school district be deemed an existing district for the purposes of Acts 46 and 49, given the geographic isolation, thereby qualifying for an exemption from the requirements of Act 46 and 49 in the statewide plan? Any questions, comments? We're gonna vote on this right off? Okay, we've got some questions now, I'll let you have the floor in a minute, uh, I saw Paul out first, and then I saw Farad.
How I, how I Pedro, why would I want to vote yes on this article?
You wanna answer that?
Sure, um, what I can explain, and I'm gonna ask, if I don't represent the intentions of, uh, of Jay in this correctly, please feel free to, to add to this. This article is a result of a petition that was filed in the town, uh, started by Jay Deno, and I believe Jimmy, uh, Jewitt as well. Act 49, which was an, an intended to Act 46, which created a couple of different structures and a couple of, um, additions to Act 46, uh, in sections three and four of that law, identified a possibility for an exemption from Act 46 based on geographic or structural isolation. Um, now, a district in order to qualify for that exemption had to have been deemed geographically isolated, honor before, was it March 1st?
March 7th.
March 7th of 2017. Um, the state then came out with a, a definition and a, and the criteria for that, but I believe that was October they came out with that, well after the deadline in the law. So what that means is that the only document that exists that talks about geographic isolation is one that was filed and, uh, created by the State Board of Education in 2011, is that the correct date? And that was in conjunction with Act 166?
Excuse me, we need to be talking to the moderator now, back and forth, I'm not trying to be unfair, but I'm gonna control this meeting, we gotta talk through the moderator, so talk to me, please.
Okay, Mr. Moderator, you shed a little clarity on this issue. Um, the Act 46 is what said requires the, the state to develop a new list by September 30th of 2017, but that list is not applied with the March 7th, 2017 date that's identified in the requirements of Act 46, actually 49. So what this does is this gives us an opportunity to designate our town as what's referred to as an existing district, and as an existing district, you will be found, or you could be called by for exemption from the requirements of Act 46, and the statewide plan will be written in 2019. So the, the exemption was created because of Act 153, which was a pre-Akt 46 merger proposal, but it was all volunteered at that time, but that's section 21 of 153, describing the requirement for the state, the Court Department of Education, to build this list, which was generated in 2011. It's the only list that exists that confirms the fact that Franklin is one of three Franklin County schools that in terms of geographic isolation. So if we vote, um, should it back up a bit? The Act 49 requires the electorate to vote in favor of establishing existing district status on before November 30th, 2017, so if we take this opportunity to vote this our way in, it'll give us a strong argument with the state to maintain our title to exemption from the requirements of Act 46 and the statewide plan.
So if I understand this right, Jay, if you vote yes for this, it basically gives us teeth to say, no, you leave us alone, we'll stay as we are?
If you vote yes for this, then we'll be officially establishing Franklin as an existing district, which will fit the criteria described in, in sections three and four of Act 49. Yes, it'll give us the argument to say that we're exempt from the requirements of Act 46.
Does that answer your question, Paul?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Farad, I saw your hand up, do you still want to speak?
I just wanted to say when we're ready to vote.
Here, use the mic.
I just wanted to say when we're ready to vote, that I would like to do it by ballot or paper, because I think it will be stronger, uh, to come to numbers to, to give, uh, to the state of whoever we want to give this to, rather than any, you know, just a verbal vote.
I'll remember that when we vote to vote, that, that we have to request for paper ballot. Now, when that happens, I'm gonna take this as a request, when that happens, we vote to vote, I'm gonna ask if one paper ballot is, is asked now, and at that time, seven people stand up, we're voting paper, okay? So if everybody understands. But I'd like to continue on with questioning here, any questions or comments still need to be made. Bob, did you have more you wanted to say? Okay, let's hear from Bob for a minute.
So, to, to continue with, with what you asked.
Uh, we have a request, I think you stand up, and I wouldn't, I believe it'd be easier for everybody to see and hear you.
Yeah, did I add it? Uh, this is what we're considering, a, a kind of an ace in the hole, um, and a safety valve, if you will. Our first and primary desire is that we remain within our current governance structure, within the whole Supervisory Union, and that's what Article 2 addresses. However, if the state decides that they don't agree with our proposal, and they turn us down, uh, then we're subject to, as he talks about the state plan, the state plan is, the Board of Education will look at all the remaining pieces, all the remaining players on the map, and they will figure out what they feel is best, and the best structure to put everybody in that's remaining. Uh, so that would mean they could come in and they could force a merger, uh, of our schools and in our Supervisory Union, even though we've said that we desire that not to happen. Um, which is another reason why we have you all here tonight, because we want more people here to hear your voice, as well as the committee's voice on this subject, because it's so important. But Article 1, as petitioned by Jay, is that it's our ace in the hole, it's a chance for us that if the state comes at us and tries to force a merger, we have the vote from our electorate, hopefully approving and deciding that they want to designate Franklin as an existing district, and that we would hopefully be able to be exempt from the statewide plan at that point.
Any other questions or comments? You ready to vote? George?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask if anybody has an opposing view, that's why we should vote no on.
George has asked, is there anybody out there having an opposing view to this article? Doesn't look that way, George. Nobody's jumping up? Fur?
Furmeater, my question, could they, if these were our own identity, could they force us to make, make our kids go through seventh through twelfth grade here in Franklin? Could that be fair? I'm just asking the question.
Are, are you talking as a result of Article 1, or as a result of a, a merger, uh, you can?
Just saying, we didn't match with anybody else in the district, and we got our kids one through six, and they moved them to twelfth, but they made us.
I'd say because of the electorate vote, uh, that took place 45 years ago, establishing the Siskiyou Valley Union High School, and that Franklin was party to that vote, um, that would require legal action to dissolve, that would require a vote from the communities to dissolve that relationship, uh, at the Union High School level, the district law, that in order to, once that is voted into establishment, it requires a vote from the electorate to dissolve that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none? I'm gonna ask that if seven people stand up, we're gonna vote this on paper. Do we have seven people that want, yep, we don't. Okay, let me explain this. If you vote yes, that means that we will be deemed an existing district for the purpose of Act 49. Basically, what we're gonna do, if we vote yes, we will be in, um, an existing district geographically isolated, basically in a short term, it's not the whole motion, the whole motion, I will read it again here, but if you vote yes for that, we will be a geographically isolated district, and that will exempt us from Act 46 and 49, so basically stopping the state from making us merge with other towns, or other districts, I should say. Okay, the article on the floor, shall Franklin School District be deemed an existing district for the purpose of Act 46-49, given the, our geographic isolation, thereby qualifying for an exemption from the requirements of Act 46-49 and the state plan? Okay, I think they got some paper here to hand out for you to vote on. I hope you wanna, Bob, Tom, you guys wanna go?
I should say, but if you can only vote, you can vote the right way with this. No, absolutely, absolutely, we love, I was hoping you guys more, I hope we can.
Okay, we're so, we're so on the low.
Right, that's exactly where I've been with this, straight up, that's why I started with you, like, we gotta keep going voting, and the world likes, you know, you'll be hard out, and, 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 within, in which an enhanced alternative governance structure as defined in Act forty-six and forty-nine? So the real thing is in breadth of these last thing I read. So the real article should be, should the Franklin School District with other members of the Franklin Northwest Supervisory Union propose to the Vermont State Board of Education to enhance the current operations of the Franklin, Hygate, MVU, and Sheldon, Sheldon, and Swanton School Boards? Does somebody want to turn on? I take it you do, Jamie?
Mr. Moderator, it's my pleasure to recommend we approve this article.
So you're making the motion that we put this on the floor?
I made the motion to put it on the floor.
Do I hear a second? I see a hand out back there. I don't know your name. Can you give me your name?
Yes.
Kathy White. White. Has seconded it? Okay. Given that, shall the Franklin School District be deemed an existing district for the purpose of Act forty-six, forty-nine, the school?
We've done that one.
Given, oh, I'm on the wrong one. Excuse me, you're right. Bed could be played tonight. Shall the Franklin Town School District with other members of the Franklin Northwest Supervisory Union propose to the State Board, Vermont State Board of Education to enhance the current operations of the Franklin, Hygate, MVU, Sheldon, and Swanton School Boards? Any discussion? Any comments, questions? We're going to start voting on this? Nobody has?
I'd like to make some comment.
Okay, we've got Bob here who's going to start the deal with. Here from you, Bob.
All right. I know a lot of people have been a little confused by this. The wording is a little different than what you would expect. We were kind of, our hands are a little bit tied in the wording because we're not proposing what the state preferred model is. So therefore, we kind of had to come at it from a different direction. Just for a little bit of background so you understand where we're coming from. A while back, we met with a lot of you here when we did a pre-seven oh six committee study about Act forty-six. And we decided at that point not to go down a formal seven oh six study with input from all of you. There was a petition for us not to enter into that. And the Supervisory Union Board decided to form an independent study committee instead of going the formal seven oh six study committee route. I've been on that committee now for about a year and a half. We've been meeting twice a month, trying to come up with the best way that our Supervisor Union could meet the goals of Act forty-six. I hope that you've all at least had a chance to look at it, at least the overview of what the proposal is. It's been available on the website. It's been available in multiple locations around town. The crux of what we're proposing, the short Cliff Notes version, is that Act forty-six lays out five definitive goals that you have to meet regardless of what structure you choose to be in to do so. The state prefers that you merge into a unified school district, which would mean that we would all operate MVU, Swanton, the Hygate, Franklin, and Sheldon under one board. We had to take a look at that, what that meant, if that would achieve any savings, achieve any efficiencies, and achieve a better education being delivered to our children. The committee did a pretty good, honest self-assessment. And I think it was beneficial to us to do so. To go to the State Board and say, we have no interest in this. We just want to remain exactly as we are. I think we'd be doing our kids a disservice because there are ways we can do things better. And we identify some of those in our proposal. However, we feel that we can achieve those goals and remain in our current governance structure, which means Franklin Central School retains its local school board. Hygate retains its board. Swanton retains its board. And then MVU retains it. And Sheldon also retains their board. However, there are several things identified in the proposal where we can work better together to make sure that we're all achieving the best results we can achieve. So we're thinking a little more globally, but we're still remaining local and keeping our local voice here where it belongs. That's the proposal in a nutshell. If you have any questions, if you had a chance to look at it and there's something that you have any questions about it, be happy to answer them. But I just want to make it clear that if you vote yes on this article, then you are supporting the recommendations of the study committee, which have also been approved by the Supervisory Union Board and also approved by our local board. And that recommendation is to remain local, to keep our local school board here and to have the local school board decide what happens in this building. So if you vote yes, you support that. And your voice is going with us to Montpelier when we make the presentation in January to the State Board of Education. If you vote no, that indicates that you do not support that proposal and that you would prefer to have the state come in and whatever plan that they see best fits our students and they would apply that. And then you support them coming in and doing that. So I just want to make sure there's no question, a yes vote. And I've got a lot of questions over the week about this. A yes vote stays local. You support the committee's decision. You can support the proposal. And you want to keep your local board and you want to keep your decisions local. A no vote means you do not agree with that and you would like the state to come in and explore whatever merger options that they want to, or see works for us at that point. So all been up. If there's any questions about the proposal, any questions without the vote, please. This is your opportunity. I want to make sure you have no questions and that you're able to make informed answers because this is critical in the future of our school here.
Here, Bob, if there's any questions. George.
George Bowden.
Can everybody hear him? Wiggle your mic, George.
George Bowden. Mr. Moderator. Can I ask if someone could explain the definition of enhanced? What do we mean by enhanced? Is this going to be another board? Is it an overall board or something? What does that mean?
I believe Bob's worked hard on this committee. I'll let him answer that question.
By enhanced, we are acknowledging that the way we were doing business was not perfect and that we could improve. And if you read through the proposal, there's many action plans on there. Items that we give address, creating feedback loops with our students going up into the middle school. So we have some feedback coming back from the middle school. How are students prepared? How are the other students prepared? So that those schools can use that template just for their curriculum. We've got, Franklin has always done exceedingly well on the state testing. That's not the case in all of our districts. And we want to help everyone to achieve success. So enacting best practices, more communication at a grade level amongst the schools. Some of the school improvement teams are already in place. We're going to redirect their focus to help achieve the goals of Act forty-six. So there's enhancements that we're making within our current structure. We're not just proposing that we, business as usual, we go like nothing ever happened and hope for the best. We've identified some places we can do better and we plan on acting on them. But it's within our current governance structure. There's no changes to the way we do business and the decision being made locally.
Yes, you're allowed to retake the floor.
Are you saying?
George, you guys are going to need to run through.
Mr. Moderator, sorry. Mr. Moderator, is the proposal that enhances structure means that boards will talk to each other? Will that be part of the enhancement?
That will be part of the enhancement. It's increased cooperation, increased communication amongst the schools around professional development, around best practices, around the testing. Just trying to create that dialogue. We've also looked at equity and identified, like at Sheldon, for instance, the middle school does not really communicate with the middle school at all at MVU. And that seems to be something we can improve upon. There are programs offered at Sheldon that are not offered at MVU and vice versa. We're looking at addressing those issues. So the enhancements are all of those things that we've identified and we should plan on working together, make a commitment that we all work together. Thinking globally, but remaining local.
Any other questions or comments? We're ready to vote? Brett raises her hand. Yeah, can you say that into the mic? I think you've got some very important stuff you're saying, but I can't quite hear it either.
I would like to have paper ballots to vote so that we can get the numbers that we need so that we can send the proper numbers with the board to the state so that they know what our track feelings are, how to say verbal vote.
So Brett is asking that if seven people stand up, we will have the numbers for the state, not just that we voted yes tonight, but actual hard numbers to say how we voted. So if I could have seven people stand up. I'm not even going. Okay, hand out the paper ballots, please.
And if I could just add, just before you vote, just to make sure everyone is crystal clear and there's no misconceptions about it. A yes vote on this article means that you're voting to maintain your local board and maintain your current governance structure. A no vote means that you do not support that and you'd like to see the state explore merger options for us.
And the possibility of losing representation. A no vote means you may lose representation. Okay, yes, one announcement before you come up and place your ballots. Everybody going around here, anybody needing assistance that would prefer we pick your ballot up at your chair, raise your hand, we'll have the Board of Civil Authority pick it up. If anybody would prefer that they not get in line and would like their ballot picked up, please raise their hand. We've got some up in the corner. Does anybody want to vote that hasn't voted? Or we go on more. Okay, any others? Before any further, the votes are low. Do we have one coming in? Yeah, we'll wait for him. We'll wait for you. We made it this far, you can just all vote.
That's the right vote, yeah.
Any others that have not voted, they want to? Okay, how polls are close? I would like to take this moment here to, I wear two hats here. I'm also on the school board. And I'd like to thank Bob because I know how much Bob put into this. He put a huge effort into this. Thank you, Bob.
I'd like to say, do you think?
Well, I just got one question for you, though, Bob. Any idea how many hours you put into those meetings and everything else?
I wouldn't even want to hazard a guess, but I'm guessing it was two minutes.
I wouldn't disagree with hour. Go ahead, Bob.
Okay. I'd like to say, the reason that I moved into this town nine years ago was because of the school reputation it had. And I'm glad you guys turned up today to come and vote because it's important and it's good to see community and you're supporting your school. So thank you for coming out and we appreciate it. The school board appreciates it. I know Joyce appreciates it. And it would be the school influence without all you folks. So thank you.
Votes in. And again, I've never seen this until a vote before. We had no no's. We had a hundred and sixty-one votes and they were all yes. And I think that speaks very highly of this town. And I believe by speaking for our school board and our staff that we really thank you for coming out and supporting us. And supporting us unanimously really makes it, really makes it feel good out here for us to be able to move forward with this Act forty-six. And I think we're going to go with a strong voice from Franklin. The little town that will be heard. Thank you. Very bad, I take the motion to adjourn. It's moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, we're adjourned.